I'm going to call to order the Town of Pulaski Planning Commission meeting for Tuesday, November 12th. We had a roll call.
Ms. Arthur, Mr. Scrantz.
Yes.
Mr. Meyer, Mr. Hale.
Here.
Mr. Taylor.
Here.
Mr. Clark.
All right, and everyone get a chance to review and approve the minutes. Any questions? Comments?
The only question I had was on the second page, the second paragraph was saying he asked the commissioners their thoughts on the building permanent applications submitted every three to five years or a special exception becomes void. Is it that within three to five years? Okay.
Yes.
Just a cool, but everything else good to me?
Good, okay. Okay, well, we can do a voice vote on that then, so if you approve, say aye.
Aye.
All right, any disapprove? No? All right, the ayes have it.
Aye.
Yeah.
Did we make a motion?
Oh, yeah, let's get a motion on that first.
Sir, Vice Chairman, I make a motion that we approved the October 21st, 2024 minutes.
All right, now we can do a voice vote, all right? All approve, say aye. Aye. Disapprove? All right. Now, we should be good on that. Thank you. So we move to our first and only public hearing for today, which is on SPO-24-SE-4. This is for a special exception submitted by Huffman Automotive for an automobile major repair with outdoor storage and scrap and salvage services on a general business parcel. So I'll go ahead and actually get a staff report on that first before I open, is that okay?
So Mr. Huffman of Huffman Automotive is looking to expand his business operation, and he has rented a parcel across the street from his current location at 401 North Madison Ave., and he is proposing to operate a towing salvage and impound lot and refurbishment facility, as well as some increased parking for his current facility that's on Fifth Street. This was, this special exception was brought to us via a zoning violation, and he's been cited several times by the code enforcement officer for inoperative vehicles, and so we're trying to get, we're trying to get that all cleaned up and determine what the town is willing to do with that property. Presently, it is zoned for general business district. The neighborhood in the area is surrounding it, has heavy industrial uses, particularly behind it and on the, across the street on Madison. On the right-hand side and on the front and across the street on Fifth Street, there are residential and business parcels, and so it becomes a question of neighborhood compatibility, and also our future land use map does not currently has that slated to be of commercial uses, not, not industrial, so this would be a more intensive use than we have planned there in the future. That is, so town, so Planning Commission has a bit to sort through in terms of how they would like to recommend that council proceed. Last meeting, there were questions that were raised regarding view shed from Fifth Street, particularly as he would be required to have a privacy fence around the impound part of his lot, based on observation studies from the streets and sidewalk areas. It's would probably be prudent to recommend having some kind of visual buffer, whether that's planting or additional along the Fifth Street side. He, he does, his, his property on the Madison Street side is elevated, and so with screening on the fence line, it probably won't be visible additionally, that is industrial area, so it's similar neighborhood space. Other questions that were raised were related to DEQ's regulations on, on vehicle maintenance and fluid storage and stuff like that. I provided you all with the DEQ checklist, that would be something that would be mandatory for any operating business such as that in the state of Virginia. And then you were also curious about what kind of impact that might have for floodplains, and I've provided you the map of the floodplains on that parcel. As you can see, the parcel is partially in and partially out of the floodplains. The building is primarily in the floodplains, however, it has been elevated, it is on like a concrete slab that's lifted up a bit, so I think the risk is minimal at this point in terms of, of what would happen in the case of a flooding event to that property. Where the parking area would be is completely out of the floodplain, so it becomes a liability more so on the business than the clients. So that is, that is primarily the, the crux of, I think, what we were discussing last time, and it becomes a question of what is in the public best interest and how the town would like to proceed.
Okay, thank you. Proceed to open the public hearing for this then, and we'll move on to our speaking slips. So we do have some speakers, we will first up have on this Chuck Yates, is that right? Yep, you want to come up here and?
Unfortunately.
We do ask if you can, please.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Chuck Yates, appreciate you guys calling this meeting. I live at 631 Prospect Avenue, that's the last house on the right going up the hill, my driveway is on Madison Avenue. My views are all down Madison Avenue when I looking out my balcony from my house. I, I want to say one thing real quick, is that, you know, we keep talking about like Huffman's is asking to do this, make no mistake about it, they're already doing it. He's, he's got that lot full of cars, he drops motors down there, he drops transmissions down there, he's dropping fluids on the ground down there. The, the, I think the problem we have, if we were talking about the way United Muffler used to operate the property, I wouldn't have any problem with it, but he operated the property in great stewardship of the neighborhood. And Huffman has operated the property in total defiance of the neighborhood, in total defiance of our ordinances, in total defiance of taking care of safety. He, he parks two big old wreck trucks on the street on Madison Avenue where you can completely block in the southbound lane, right there at the light. He, he just, he, there's just been no show to have any kind of care about how the neighborhood sees him. And so, he's not going to operate the building, he's not going, the, the, the area in a, in a proper way, he doesn't care about our ordinances and our laws, he has shown that from day one. He jammed, let me get to my notes before I get on a roll here. The thing that I want to say is, it seems in my heart that Pulaski's kind of got their mindset on, on, on turning us into kind of this junky dystopian town, that it doesn't have to be that way, and Madison Avenue is epicenter of that, if you look at it. We already have, already on Madison Avenue alone, multiple lots with big trucks that Jake break their way into town every day constantly. There's about 20 or 30 completely inoperable big trucks on those lots that nobody does anything about, it's just a junkyard down there for big trucks. We already have on Madison Avenue, a towing company that doesn't properly maintain their property, the fences where it's supposed to block everything is completely torn down, you can see it all the time, they don't care about the neighborhood either. We already have on Madison Avenue, some kind of salvage company that has a wreck truck that's been there for like a year and a half, that's like on proud display, look at our wreck truck, you know, it's like, it's like that's what Pulaski wants to see now, is, is junk and wreck vehicles and inoperable vehicles, and we keep, we keep enabling that in our town, right in the heart of our town. We already have two huge sets of buildings that are inoperable and nobody's used them, they're decades past any kind of, you know, good use, they need to be torn down and razed so that that land can be reclaimed for homes and parks and beautiful places within the town, because they're doing nothing but looking like a junkyard right in the middle of town. And now we have Huffman, and they come in and right out of the gate, I mean, he may be the nicest guy in the whole wide world, I've never met him, he, he may be the best mechanic on the planet, but he is a horrible steward of the neighborhood. He parks on the street and, he just doesn't care, I've seen several times that people have had to stop and wait on cars because they couldn't even get around, I've had to do the same thing myself. He just has jammed inoperable, and, and these vehicles he's parking on the street are inoperable. There's a big tow truck sitting there right now with flat tires and the hood off of it, it's inoperable on the street, and I know that's violating our public ordinances and laws, and he doesn't care, he, it's sitting there tonight, knowing we're sitting here talking about this. You know, he would think that he would have taken the tiniest little bit of effort to clean it up a little bit, but he hadn't, he doesn't care, he's just jammed it full of inoperable vehicles, you know, vehicles he buys at auction and fixes up and gets rid of, he's been painting cars right there in, outside in the parking lot, he painted a white utility truck outside in the parking lot, you know that overspray was going all over the customers' cars sitting there? He has just loaded all kinds of cars already in that lower part, and I, I dispute the fact that any cars are going to be parked aren't going to be in the floodplain, because if they're not in the floodplain, they have to be up on the side of that hill. And there may be a way to park them up on the side of that hill, but that's not where he's going to want to park them, he's going to park them down there in the flat. The other thing I want to mention is that it bothers me quite a bit that most of the vehicles he's using to operate his business are, are tagged outside of the state of Virginia. So the town of Pulaski is not even getting the taxes for the vehicles he uses to run his business. He, he does everything he can to subvert the law, everything he can to bypass the rules, and we want to help this person, we want to enable this person to go ahead and put another junkyard on Madison Avenue, we've got two junkyards on Madison Avenue. I think we're junkyarded out. I think he should be made to clean up the mess he's got already, that he's been in violation of our laws, clear the mess off that lot, and it be left as non-used as it's supposed to be, because that's one of the things, that's Route 11, when you come into the town of Pulaski. If you're, if you're trying to stay off 81 and just drive south, and you come through the town of Pulaski, you know what you got to go by? You got to go by the junkiest looking crap out there at Barker's, the old car place, you got to go by the junkiest looking crap down there at, at, at Terrace Van Heaven, that used to be down through there, what's we called it, Terrace Vans, because they all, you know, looked like the Terrace Vans off of Back to the Future, you know? We said all the guy, VW Terrace Vans, he was, he was supplying Terrace Vans to the world, that's a joke, by the way, that's one. But, and then you got to go by, you know, useless Pulaski furniture, and then the last, you finally come out of that mess, and, and he wants to extend it another little bit and just keep it, you know, looking as nasty as possible, and, and, you know, people have a bad idea of Pulaski as it is, and we don't do nothing but help them continue to have a bad idea about Pulaski. I strongly am against allowing any zoning relief to Huffman's, but he's already flaunted the laws in Pulaski. We should be cleaning up the things on Madison Avenue, not trashing them up further. Madison Avenue shouldn't be the trash can for the town of Pulaski, and that's how you got, or whoever manages these things has kind of treated it, we've opened the door to people just to dump crap on Madison Avenue. To summarize, the man doesn't respect our laws now, he will willfully disobey them when he gets more relief. I believe he's already causing environmental issues in a floodplain, I've seen motors laying on the ground in the floodplain, and I think he must be forced to clean it up, and I oppose any zoning relief. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir, appreciate it. We do have more, we have, looks like RD Warburton, is that right? Oh, we got, take your time.
Evening, gentlemen, first I want to thank you for your service, and I don't mean to mix it up with Veterans Day, I have been on that board, I have been the town attorney, as you know, and we rely on people like you, so thank you, this is an awkward time of day to have a meeting. My name is David Warburton, I live at 104 Sixth Street Northeast, I've been there since 1982, and I'm not here on behalf of anybody except my family that lives in that house. Here's a couple of observations for you. The character of the street on the north side, which is not at issue tonight, is 100% pardon me, residential, except for what Mr. Jesse started and where they are now. That side of the street should, in my opinion, remain primarily residential. Second observation I'll make is what Mr. Yates referred to. If you go from the town limits near the so-called new elementary school, there's only one traffic light on Route 11, the entire length of time you're in the town of Pulaski, it's right next to my house, it stops you right there at that corner, and Mr. Yates is correct, it projects housing and, I would say, some affluence versus what in the world is in the center of town, that's the Pulaski furniture project that you should be doing something about at a meeting besides tonight. At issue for me is this, Mr. Yates is 100% correct, and I'll add a couple more. In my business, you don't come to court or come to a tribunal like you all and say, ignore all the problems I'm creating, just give me what I want, it's called unclean hands. Mr. Huffman has been uniformly a very poor neighbor. I advise my clients to go and meet your neighbors before you're going to see them at a town meeting. He has routinely blocked sidewalks on both sides of the road, that access, with vehicles, operable or not, I don't know, I assume they're not, or they wouldn't be there to be fixed. I do know the, the wrecker that Mr. Yates is talking about, been sitting there with a block of wood under the back tire so it won't roll any further, and they're working on it, they took the hood off, nut the hood off, so that they can work on it in the street. They routinely work on cars in the street, they routinely use Madison Avenue after they believe they fixed a car, running up and down, make sure it's running before they turn it over to the customers, and it's just absolutely inappropriate use of Madison Avenue especially because it's a school bus route. I have witnessed on two occasions them doing that on cars with no license plates on them. As far as liquids, I'm not an expert on EPA regulations regarding liquids, I'm not a floodplain expert either, but let me tell you this, Mr. Jesse ran a good business there for a long time, and it petered out and we're all done, and he just stayed until he couldn't stay any longer, and the minute the Huffman's bought that place, that place went berserk. It's a good, thriving business in this town, which we need more. He wants to expand, if he wants to go the direction, but only in the direction that he's intending to go, I honestly don't have any problem with it. He is in fact already doing it, which goes back to the, don't come in here violating all the laws and say, but give me what I want, but anything that occurs on the south side of Route 11, I'm okay with. One more time, I don't represent any of my neighbors, I have a feeling I have a difference of opinion with my neighbors, but I would suggest that you recommend to town council that they put on hold any approval until this business gets in compliance with its current difficulties, come back, and I'll come back and speak in favor of it again. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. And we have David Stanley.
I thank y'all for your time, I live at 103 Sixth Street, it's literally like four houses down from his garage. We moved here two years ago, just about, bought a good sized house, Pulaski was actually the bike park doing good stuff, we left Rafford to come to Pulaski. I work in that building, so I can speak to, no matter what he does or tries to do, he's not going to keep the oil and the antifreeze off the ground, it's just, we have, that's why we doing some concrete slabs, so we can clean them, clean it up. My kids can't get down the sidewalk when his trucks are there, it's just... Three houses have went on the market in the last year, just in that four or five block radius, and they've all sold within the first month or two, those are people that are putting money back into them, painting them, making them nice. It's just, I'm more concerned about the home values going back down with that, and like, I agree with both of them, he's not compliant on anything, the people that own that lot, that money goes to North Carolina. If you pull up the plot map that the Huffman garage sits on, it says it's owned residential office, not industrial or business. I'm just very against it turning into a salvage yard, just mainly because of home values, people's working really hard as it is to bring the home values up. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. And we also have Carolyn Soprano, is that right?
Thank y'all for your time. I don't have a lot to say, but I do say that I used to hear, live here in Pulaski years ago, we came back because it was a quiet, nice, easygoing town, but since I've come back, I've seen, you know, the town has fallen down. It's almost like a ghost town downtown, there's not a lot, a whole lot of stuff to do, there should be businesses in that area if you want to do businesses, there's other areas that somebody can have a scrapyard that's not in somebody's face and bringing down their property value. We also have a problem where he parks his cars near the sidewalk on that street where the red light is, there is a road that comes behind our properties, we can't get out of there, we can't see to get out of there because there's too many cars blocked there, so that's a hazard, that's a problem for people trying to walk, people trying to do things on that street. I have a handicapped daughter, I am disabled, and there are things that it's hard enough to do as it is when it's a normal sidewalk, but he has cars there, he has the, the tow truck that he brings in, comes in off of the main street, and it doesn't always get into the parking lot, so it blocks the sidewalk. When they first moved in there, we moved in here in December, when he first moved in there, he spray painted, and instead of spray painting the building properly, he just let it fly everywhere, he chipped the paint and the paint off and let it fall on the ground, let the wind blow it away. So I just feel like there's a lot of violations going on, and I'm not any kind of violated person, but I did call, and I did say, he's got way too many cars in that parking lot, it's a hazard to people who are trying to walk. Does he have the right to sell vehicles that are on there? And my understanding from the town was, he has a right to sell because he owns a business, and it's if he doesn't, you know, if the people do not pay him for the car, the maintenance that's on it, then he has the right to sell it. Well, there's lots of car lots around here, and we don't need another one in the middle of town that is looking like that. There's been several cars that's been there, three, four, five, six months, that have not moved at all. There's a Corvette sitting there, it's been there since day one. And then his own tow trucks, if he's not going to maintain them, how is he going to maintain the property? We've got several disabled children in the area, and if they walk through there, then, you know, it might be a problem if those cars or trucks are always flying through there. Now, I came through the red light, not being disgraceful or anything to the police department or fire department, but I was taking a left, and apparently there was an emergency, and the police and I almost hit, and I was taking the left, and I did not see his lights, so it's already a very tight street as it is, if you're coming to take a left from where the tractor and trailers come through, to go on that street, and then you go straight to Madison. But you also have the buses, then you have UPS, and then you have the mail people, you cannot have all that extra traffic right on that corner, it's very hazardous. If he wants a building like that, let him get a building like 99 Auto Pay or something that's off the main road and off the main drag, so people can be safe. That's all I have to say.
What was your address?
45 Fifth Street.
Thank you. And we have Gary, is it Horn, somebody says? Okay, same address, it looks like, right?
Yep, thank you all, my name's Gary, me and Carolyn have the luxury of being next-door neighbors to this business. When we first moved into our house, that business was not there, very quiet, and I, I moved here from Florida, so I'm used to crazy, big city life, all that, and then we lived in Roanoke before coming to Pulaski, and I like the calmness, the peacefulness. Yes, that's a little bit of a busier street, but me coming from big city, it's quiet and peaceful, when this business came in, it was like chaos right out of the gate, cars parked all over the place, we do have a disabled daughter, and quite honestly, we feel for her safety when she walks around the neighborhood to get her exercise, and there's lots of hazards out in the street where it should be confined in, off the street to his business. If his business is growing that much, why not, like Carolyn said, do like a 99 auto where it's bigger, outside of a residential area, and quite honestly, if he's doing this on the side of his business, allowing him more room to create dangers and just outright disrespect to the neighbors around him, like the first gentleman spoke about, I, I, even if he put up a fence, is it going to be the same type of fence that the towing place has where you can just see right through it? It's a lot of industrial, and honestly, it could be better to look out our front and actually see parks, more homes, different things like that, it's like we look out our front doors, we have pawn shop, junkyard, tow yard, muffler place, it's like I'm living in the middle of a dump, and it shouldn't be that way, and I think if you allow it to expand, it will affect home values, and, you know, Pulaski could be better, and, and I, I think in areas it is better, and it can grow better, but in order to do that, you have to put stops to things like this, and that's just my personal opinion, and that's all I have, thank you.
Thank you. We don't have any more on the sheet, but I think we have some others that have come in, so Summer, would you like to fill that afterwards, or you want to, okay, okay. Since that's the case, if you want to, you wanted to go, you just give your name and address. Since that's the case, if you wanna, you wanted to go, you just give your name and address. Yep, come on up.
Everybody ready?
Yep.
This is not a problem of one incident. This is a town problem. I have a church. I'm a minister. I have a church and within three blocks, there are a pile of cars sitting in a, a place for I don't know how long. The see-through fencing has blown up ninety percent of the time. It's not mowed, it's not weed-eated. Uh, granted, there's a little bit of asphalt. So this is, you guys are dealing with a neglectful town council mayor. Okay, own four houses, muffler shop, the old Maple Lodge, and the rest of them are mine. Okay, down through there. And I've sat there and watched the fence blow up across the road on the towing. They said, oh, we don't leave anything on the lot more than, what, sixty days, thirty days, something like that? Thank you. I saw you laugh. Uh, and that's, that's a lie from the pit of hell. Um, so here we are again. I have this in front of my church. To get to my church, you gotta pass this, this place. I blame the town for that. I really do. I blame the town for what's across from my houses. I look at that fence and that towing company, they could care less what they're doing. They pile them in there. They park on the street sometimes. It's hard to get through the street. And now we want to let this come in again. And there are legal ways that the town can set rules before someone asks, and you don't have to do all this garbage, okay? You set standards for the town. I'm fussing at you guys, not meaning to. I'll take you all out to lunch tomorrow if you want me to. Um, it, but there are ways you set standards. You zone it in a certain manner that it has standards, sign standards, parking standards. All the standards. We have none of that. Um, me personally, I know what it is to have a small business. I know how a struggle it is. The reason they bought the muffler place is because it was cheap, okay? I know the guy that ran it. He offered it to me. I don't want an auto body shop, that's for sure. Um, but at the same time, here we are discussing something that shouldn't be here. It should have already said on a piece of paper somewhere that this type of business is not allowed. I, I can go down Madison and there's a truck that's been sitting there for six, eight months, tractor trailer. Nothing fenced around it, been wrecked, stays there all the time. Town says nothing. We traded Volkswagens, remember those? Those are fun. We traded Volkswagens for junk. What's the difference between Volkswagen sitting on those lots and junk? And see, that's my question. That means that somebody on town council isn't doing their job. The mayor isn't doing his job. I like the guy, but none of them are doing their job because if they did, we wouldn't have to come to these issues, okay? And if it was only one or two places in the town, I would say, okay, it's only one or two, but it isn't, okay? And I think everyone on this team here knows that it's not just one or two places. It's the way the town has set up and you guys need to go back to the town council and say, listen, y'all doing a stupid job and if you can't get it right, leave me out. Because you shouldn't have to hear this. There are ways that they can designate. This is a business district from Route ninety-nine, from eighty-one, coming down ninety-one, one hundred, and you can designate. And then you can, within that business district, you can set up bylaws by which every business has to be obedient to. Okay? Do we have them? I think we have a half a page of them. We need a book of them. That way, this doesn't have to take place. Second thing is this, we have investors coming in our town. I don't care, I don't care where they, they can come for ten buck too. I appreciate business. We need to appreciate business. But if there's no standards to the business, okay? If we don't have any standards for the businesses that come in, then we haven't done our job, okay? These people renovating downtown, guess what's gonna happen, guys? It's already happened. Went down through downtown last night and they're putting apartments up there's, and they're gonna have apartments everywhere down through there. Because it's a good place to have apartments. And guess where they're parking? In front of storefronts. Guess what won't happen downtown? As long as the town, the town should have set that up a long time ago. Here's another incident. This guy wanting to put scraps everywhere. It's just another incidence of their likeness of doing their job, okay? Uh, I am sorry that you guys have to hear the brunt of it. Okay, but I think you also have the ear of the town council. And the, the town council needs to hear this from you guys because they're making your job harder. And they're gonna, guess who's gonna get blamed? If he didn't get his place? Right here. And it shouldn't be there. The town council needs to step up and do something. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I possibly say one thing?
You're okay, I'm okay with it. So if you're okay with it, I'm okay with it.
Just come up to Madison Avenue, just stop at the top of Madison Avenue and look back on the town. It's one of the most beautiful views in the town. And try to imagine if that junkyard that this guy's created wasn't there and that big blue stupid building wasn't there and Pulaski furniture wasn't there. Because if it wasn't, Pulaski would look as pretty as any town in Gatlinburg. It, it's, it's one of the most beautiful towns sitting under a beautiful mountain. It's, it would look as pretty as any town in the Smokies. But instead, we kinda wanna just industrialize and trash it. And those things need to be rid of the town instead of brought into the town. And that's, that's the only thing I wanted to comment on. And, and I hear people say all the time, you know, Pulaski would be beautiful if it wasn't for. I hear it all the time. Yeah, Pulaski would be beautiful if it wasn't for that. Pulaski would be beautiful if it wasn't for that. You know, and, and the bottom line is, when my dad came to Pulaski nineteen fifty-five, those things weren't there. And, but the, the Maple Shade Inn was, and he drove through Pulaski going on his way to, to, to the army when he was inducted to the army. And he said, when I came through Pulaski, it was the most beautiful place he'd ever seen. And this was where he chose to live, just because it was so beautiful. And nobody does that today. Because it's kinda just a junky little place and it doesn't have to be that way. I got that off my chest, thank you. Thank you, not making me stand up again.
Do we, uh, we didn't have any other speakers, I guess, other than him, but if anybody else, any other alibis or any other speakers wanna come up and speak on this? Now's your time. Otherwise, we'll close it.
I have a question. Was this published?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Yes.
Yes, yeah. We, it has to be published. There has to be a two week notice.
You should have also received a letter. I'll double check the, the address list, but.
It's okay. I just, I just.
It should have, it should have gone through. I, like I said, I can double check the. Prob- probably. I went through the, I went through the, anything, those, those addresses, the ones that are on the.
No other alibis, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing. And we'll go on to our comments from you all. For the commissioners, if you have any to speak of, of this on the subject. You wanna start, Jeremy?
Yeah, uh, with everything that has been said and especially with the summons that we have, I don't think it's a good idea to grant this, uh, especially with all the stuff that's been going on. Um, like, uh, everybody else said that it's already happening without permission, so. I don't think it's a good idea to expand, um, something that's gonna be another eyesore, uh, for the town.
Yeah, yeah, when he was talking about big blue, I mean, that's, that's, that's been my biggest gripe since I moved here in the town is that big ugly blue building. And, uh, you know, I just, uh, when I moved to, from Bradford to here, like you said, I moved to Pulaski in, 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 um, twenty sixteen. Um, I saw the value in the town and, and how much beauty they're light in and a lot of work has to go into. And I think, I mean, I credit Summer and the town staff honestly are really trying their best to make it better. And I think, I think we all, we know that, you know, and hopefully the citizens will understand that after some time too, you know, they are really trying. Uh, it's just taking some time to kinda get everybody on the same page. Uh, but I think we all see the value in the town and we all wanna make it better. This, we have our future land use map for a reason and we go off of that. We talk about that all the time. We did our exercises a couple of years ago on that. Where we wanted to see what the value of the town was going forward and where we wanted things to be. And we put a comprehensive plan together and that turned out really good and I think that was a really good exercise and, uh, was, uh, we handled it well as a town. And we saw areas where something like this could be useful in other parts of the town. But I just, you know, I agree with you. I don't, I don't think this is a good location for this type of business. I wouldn't say that, you know, we, we don't wanna say no to business, but we also, we want to put them in proper locations to accept them as a business and be, and be like, yeah, sure, come and, you know, be a part of the town. But we want, we need you to be part of certain areas of the town where it fits the image and where it fits the, the, the look and feel. And to have the least amount of impact to, you know, not only other businesses, but also to residents and, and the people in the surrounding area. Cause I know that ultimately, you know, the residents of, they're the biggest taxpayers and they're the ones who are seeing this every day. And, um, I think, you know, we need to take that to, in consideration as, as we always do, I think. Um, but that was just, that was my small note, cause when you said about the eyesores, I'm like, yeah, I agree. Eyesores are, are a big problem in our town. We all see it, so, um, we're cleaning them up one at a time, but it, it takes a long time. It takes a lot of legal action. It takes a lot of, uh, persistence and it takes a lot of, um, it takes a good, it, it takes a village. It really does. And a good staff. And, um, I think, I think the town staff's doing a good job on that. But, I don't know if you guys had any comments on that or? Any feedback?
Well, I agree with what being said. It's just not the proper place for it. Another location, yes. One in vicinity like Jim City, where Jim City Junk was in that area would probably be a better location, not made drag town.
Yeah, I was trying to pull up the proposed future land use map that we have here. I mean, I, I'm sure this is something that even Summer could work on and be like, hey, you know, this isn't a good, this isn't a good time and a good spot for this, at this moment. But, you know, let's, let's try to find you a place that would be better suited for this. I, I think, I think she and the town staff would be more than willing to, to help with that. Cause like I said, we, you know, we don't, we wanna have business here, but we want it to be in the right spots. And, you know, this is RO, I mean technically that side of the road is RO, we know that. Um, we know the current, you know, the, the automotive shop itself was a special exception and it was grandfathered in. Uh, so when it was bought in that time period, it remained in that grandfathering of that special exception. So it, it was kind of the ti- it was more, came down to a timing issue more than anything. Um, but I think, you know, at this, at this time, we're kinda stuck.
This man bought this thinking he could expand his business and the town gave him no guidelines. They said, yeah, put your business in. That's unfair, cause he's invested, I know, at least a hundred thousand in the building. I know what it's sold for. And so, again, this goes back to the town and their laziness, not, hey, Summer? Not the workers. I'm talking about the council. Cause I know Carla, I know everybody, almost up there, and it's this laziness. And this is what happens. And now we're gonna have somebody really mad, talking mad about our town because the town didn't do its job. The council didn't do its job. And thank you guys.
Yeah. Yeah, we're trying, we're trying to do our diligence, do diligence up here. I know that, so. It is, well, especially with K T I being there. I mean, that's, that's a, that is a, it's a whole busy area with a lot of those trucks flying through there and, yeah, I know. Yeah. Yeah.
I think, I think that is one of the aspects of the problem is that he clearly, he clearly selected a location that was too small for his vision of what he wanted to do. There's just not enough room there to have a big vehicle there if he wants. I, I don't think that we, anybody can force somebody to, hey, here, you know, abandon this place and move to this place, but we certainly can, certainly can.
Make a way for him.
Well, we certainly can say what you can and can't do in this location. We certainly have that right, I think.
And I would be mad if I was the town council. I would be up here and I'd be.
Who owns the big blue garage right there, right in the middle of downtown?
That's K T I. Is it K T I? I don't know. Well, we got, we gotta move on our conversation, but I mean, I definitely think, I, I think Summer would be more than happy to try and, try and work out, you know, with, with any business person. I mean, uh, especially if they have, you know, some sort of master plan they can bring about their business that they wanna present to her and be like, hey, you know, this is what I'm trying to do with my business. You know, can you help me out? Can you find me a location, you know, and whatnot, so. Yeah. Well, we, we had our. No, I know, but we can't. Cause we already had our open hearing and we already closed it, so technically, we're not, we're not supposed to have any more discussion on this. Thank you.
Business that was there for many years and it was always clean, it was always hard. He, he never, he never parked on the street. He never blocked the, the people coming up and down the sidewalks. He never dumped some vehicles and stuffed them in empty lots.
From my side of things.
It's all about operating a business in good faith and you haven't done that and that's what we're upset about. You blocked the roads, you asked the neighborhood and that's what we're upset about.
Thank you for coming, we appreciate it.
It's the way it's being operated.
Yeah, thank y'all for coming.
My name is Chuck Yates. I live up to here and I have nothing against you personally. It's the way it's being operated. It's not right.
Thank you.
Yeah. Thank you, we appreciate it. Uh, Dan, you got anything?
Yeah, I just, real quick from, from my side.
You were waiting, sorry.
Yeah, I know. I was, I was trying to find a good time and then we.
No, I wanted, I wanted to make sure we had some time to hear from individuals.
Yeah.
We are closed now, so.
It's good to.
Yeah, go ahead.
Hear from, um, I'm, I've been on, I've been a part of the town for a couple of years, just a little over a couple of years now. And I joined, uh, planning commission not too far after I moved in. And, um, I, I see a lot of the points that y'all have brought up and I really appreciate the, the sheer quantity of folks who came in to speak today. Cause I've been here for two years and usually we have maybe one or two people ever in a planning commission meeting. And so that's, that's big to me to hear that. big to me to hear that the neighborhood wants to have a voice in these kinds of things because I want to hear it. I don't always hear it other than reading Facebook posts and those aren't always positive. And so uh, e- even if it is it, talking about the, the character of the neighborhood, the um, how, how of the possibility of, of this sort of, of exception going through would impact the neighborhood and and hearing y'all's feedback is, is really, really, uh, I, I appreciate that a, a great deal. So um, keep, keep on coming. Um, so with most of y'all had, had similar points to what I've written down so far and um, I think, I think based on, we have in our, our future land use map that uh, that area would be more for business slash mixed use and potentially residential on the northern side of Route eleven. I think the character of the neighborhood on the north side was, to be completely honest, not necessarily for, not meant for the muffler shop to begin with a long time ago. It was all residences and in my opinion, should have stayed that way, but that is water under the bridge. But um, from, from my perspective here and looking at how we, how we look at things as a commission, um, I would say, Mr. Vice Chairman, I move that the planning commission recommended town council that the request for this special exception not be approved because of the comprehensive plan. We currently have in the comprehensive plan, this uh, a different use than, than what is being proposed here. And also the negative impact this expansion would have on the character of the neighborhood. I think those two major ones are the reasons why we should um, recommend that council not approve this special exception.
We have a motion, we have a second. Um, with that being said, I guess we can go to a roll call. Vote on that.
Ms. Arthur, Mr. Scrants, Mr. Meyer, Mr. Hale, Mr. Taylor.
Yes.
Mr. Clark.
I said yes. Sorry. Okay, so that is a yes to a recommendation to town council for not approving. Just to clear that up. Um, because as a matter, to just a point, just an informational point, the town council has, is the one who makes the final approval on this. So we, we make the recommendations. The town council is the one who does the approving and disapproving. Um, but you know, they are taking our recommendations into account when they're making their final approval. So this will be going to the next meeting, I assume then, or next, sorry, the uh, next town council session potentially?
I, I think two from next.
Two maybe? Okay. But it will be advertised, yes.
Yeah.
For town council.
You will not get letters. I believe it's gonna be December third. Is it when it's scheduled? Yep.
Yep. We appreciate y'all coming and voicing your concerns. Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, thank y'all for coming.
Otherwise, that was it for our public hearings and um, um, move into uh, we have no new business, no old business, or sorry, yeah, no old business and no other business, but we do have some staff reports.
We do.
So uh, first up is our planning commission, twenty twenty five planning commission meeting calendar for review.
And you all can stay if you'd like, or you're welcome to leave as you wish.
Yes. Thank you. Yeah, thanks.
The, I think I've seen the um, call, I call it a shotgun style house. Yeah, the nice new fence. Yeah. I saw that being put up when it was under construction.
So first time of business on the staff report is I have put together the holiday and meeting calendar for twenty twenty five. Um, that is included in your packet. Um, I will note it, I will note that once again, um, October and November's um, commission meetings are affected because of the town council when Veterans Day falls. Um, and so you will be meeting on a Tuesday in October. And I, actually, I believe you are you may, I think you're a week before Veterans Day, so I don't think you're affected. I need to double check November. Um. Yeah, I think you might be the day before Veterans Day.
Yeah, Veterans Day is probably on a Tuesday and we're on Monday.
Yeah, so I need to double check that, just to ensure that the town is actually closed on the Tuesday, but it, my guess is that is the way that one's gonna go.
Gotcha. I know you guys have town office closures and then sometimes it's spur of the moment closures, so we're pending uh, any of those changes, right? I know you'll let us know in advance of that type of stuff, so.
Yes.
That's totally fine. I get it. Um, y'all have any comments on that, on the agenda, or on the um, on the calendar?
Mm-hmm.
Say? Any, any uh, changes you'd like to make or are you okay with this? I mean, it's pretty self-explanatory.
It looks like, so we're clear except for October?
Uh, you're, yeah, you're clear except for October. Um, you will need to adopt this as the meeting calendar for next year. You can take this home and review it and we can do it in December, or you can entertain a motion now. Um, either which way.
I'll make the motion to accept what? The holiday and meeting calendar for twenty twenty five.
Okay, we have a second. Okay, we have a motion in a second. We need a roll call vote on that.
Uh, Ms. Arthur, Mr. Scrants.
Yes.
Mr. Meyer, Mr. Hale, Mr. Taylor. Mr. Clark.
Aye.
All right.
The.
I'm sure this is subject to change.
You, yes, absolutely. As stated in the parentheses above, you may amend as needed moving forward. Yeah, um. So I have received a application. I have not, it has not processed through, which is why you do not have a copy yet. And I'm still waiting on a set of plans for it from the developer. But they are interested in um, doing adaptive reuse of downtown um, buildings along First Street. Um, this is the old, it's zero and thirty-three. Those are the two that are sort of down a building between, I think it's what Thompson Tire and um, the Public Defender's Office. We have the two old industrial buildings. The old Applico building, and I think one was a welding factory or something back in the day. Yeah. Um, those two, Pete Creek Partners who did sixty-nine, sixty-seven, seventy-three, West Main have purchased those and are looking to do um, uh, mixed use, like live-in artisan, live-work studios on the bottom and then apartments on the top. Um, I can, we can either review that next meeting or we can go straight to public hearing. That is up to you guys. I, I think it's a fairly, the only question is, is if their live-work studios are sufficient for mixed use. Um, and that is, that one is questionable at the moment, I believe, but it's, it's that would probably be the larger question for you all um, in making that decision. Not so much neighborhood character or anything of that sort. Um, so if, if you guys are comfortable with that, we can schedule the public hearing or I'm happy to do a review process. I think they are anxious to build, but it's up to you.
Get all the information that we need.
Yep.
So we can.
We can do that.
Uh, good decision.
We can do that. Yep.
Okay, that's, that's my opinion.
I think so.
Okay.
In the, in the area we're planning on for comp plan is to have general mixed use, but we should take a look, take a good look at it.
Okay.
Get the full details.
Okay, sounds good.
Yes.
We'll plan a review.
And then I'll also give a chance for anybody else to, either not present people to uh,
Right.
get a chance to review that a little more thoroughly with them.
Right, okay.
Yep. Otherwise, that looks like that was it for the staff report. So anything else, Summer, or is that it?
Not presently. I am still in working on getting the future comp plan exercise compiled into a draft um, of, to fix those issues in the co- that were identified in the comp plan, particularly looking at density types for housing. Um, and in that, moving towards looking at identifying and adopting neighborhoods. Um, that is also in the comp plan. Um, and so those two goals uh, and projects that like, we're, we're working towards slowly. Um, I, I crashed a computer and had to call in I T, which slowed down the timeline a little bit. Um, but yeah, so hopefully either Christmas or January, we'll look at, we'll roll that back out and take a look at that again.
Okay. Uh, I did, I did have a question if we had any update on um, that R F P for the um, evaluating our zones and.
So uh, that is, that kind of, that, that died a while back. Um, I think it's, it's needed work, absolutely. Um, eh, the, the the question becomes finding funding for it. Um, I can have that conversation, um, but honestly, I think it's probably I would say probably one of the better ways to go about it is um, if you all, and I can, I can give you guys a draft if you want, but um, you all kind of sign off on like a policy. This is the direction we see the need for. And then present that to council. I can, again, I can do that as a, like, a staff report, or we can as a part of the packet as like a staff report, or we can.
About like a projection of.
Cut. It, so we have had issues in the past and these are permanent problems that keep cropping up is that our, our, our zoning is very toothless. Um, and so, and very broad. And so you keep running into these problems like neighborhood character, but and as it was updated in the past, it was not carefully done. And so there are contradictions within the text and where one section is, doesn't coherently like flow through. Um, and so it needs to be evaluated section by section, line by line, to make sure that everything is up to date and, and also that, that uses that are maybe no longer in the interest of, of where the town is going directionally are reevaluated. Um, and that is, that is something that needs to be done, but it, it's something that is a much larger lift than one person can do um, well. And so it becomes probably the best, the best way to go about it would be to work with a consulting company. However, that has been that has some, some drawbacks as well, right? Because you're trusting someone who's not a person who's familiar with Pulaski with, you know, how things should be in Pulaski. And so.
So is it a resourcing issue then? You just need to get more town resources to help you?
Potentially. It's, it's a, it's a one person and a four hundred, eh, I believe it's a three hundred and something page document, so.
Yeah, it's a big document. Oh, yeah. It's a big effort. That's why I wondered, you know, are we, are we, is, is there a need for the talent to hire, you know, one or two F T Es to get this done? You know, or is it better, is it physically more responsible to, you know, have a consulting firm do it? Uh, because.
So there are consulting firms that do this for a living. Like, it's not, it's not an unheard of thing. And most localities, even much larger than ours, hire out a consultant. That's not uncommon. It's just that it, something that council and, and we, we haven't gotten much traction on per the powers that be within the town. And so until that occurs, I am.
So a goal for this uh, board
Mm-hmm.
Should be, we need to go through it.
We do.
Fix the zoning.
Yes, ideally, yes.
And bind-tooth comb it.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
How, how, or how, what, when, where, why?
Yep.
Or zoning.
Yep.
Mm-hmm.
Yep.
Everywhere.
So.
That's ideal.
So we can have that, you know.
Right.
Seven D goal, that we can take the town council, say this is where we want to be.
Right.
Help us get there.
Yep. The, the other, the other thing that would be helpful, and um, this is why we're looking at the land use map, is that there are some just typical things you see in other zoning ordinances that help to characterize what you want as a town in each area of town, right? So what does, what does low-density residential look like? What does mid-density residential look like? What does an office residential district? How do we describe that? What is the character of that neighborhood? That is not well-defined in our ordinances. And so part, part of why I'm doing that um, future land use sort of relook is to better establish and so we can actually correlate land use with zoning types. Um, which will then start to go, okay, so this was our, this was our, you know, our business, our commercial district on our future land use map. This is the type of zone we're interested in seeing there. These are the regulations and the character that we're expecting to see when we, what we mean by that, when we're saying that as a land use option. And so that is something also, so it starts, it's, it, it's it's that first set of work that needs to be, that groundwork that needs to be laid that we're gonna build on top of. And so that's why that land use map is I need to get, we need, I need to get that done. Um, and dra- a draft finished, so you guys can review it and make your suggestions and we can go through that process. Um, to get that finished so that we can move on to the next thing, which is identifying those neighborhoods, districts and looking at that because the way we regulate, you know, Sixth Street may be different than the way we regulate South Madison Street, you know? Um, and, or, or Pine Street. And so that is, that is something that is helpful when you're looking at a town, particularly like Pulaski, where we've got such unique architecture in different parts of town and stuff like that, to be able to preserve that character is to be able to say, you know, from this section here, we, we want this, we want this type of housing. We want this type of feel. And then developing that, that kind of regulatory language around that. And then, you know, in this neighborhood over here, we want this type of housing and this type of feel. And to preserve this character of this neighborhood. And then that also helps you identify things like where would maybe higher density, like maybe this is where we can put in townhouses, or maybe this is where it makes sense to put in apartments, or i- i- it helps you kind of identify that. And it gives me a little more um, context about what is, what the intent is for the town and what the, what the town wants in terms of how it wants to develop, you know, into the future. And and sometimes that is done using like architects to do like modeling and you do design charrettes and stuff like that. Sometimes it's simply a document that says, hey, this is what we've got and this is what we want to keep. And the kind of, you find the commonalities and there's different ways to go about it, but that is sort of the next step.
First, we gotta do the groundwork.
First, we gotta do the groundwork. And then from there, you can go, okay, now let's look at boots on the ground. What do we want? What, what needs changing to make sure that those, those visions can become a reality?
Well, let's start there.
Yep.
And uh, it'll make our job easier.
Yeah. So we're working towards it. It's just a s- slow process and then technology got in my way as well.
Really appreciate your support on that one, cause
Yeah.
I think this is, I've been here a couple of years and this is the second uh, steamy example of the challenges we're having with the zoning and so.
Yeah. Yeah, it's obviously not. And it makes the whole town, it's an egg on everybody's face, right? So it's best to try and avoid the egg in, in general. So if we can do that by clarifying our
Yep.
our ordinances and codes and, and laws, then we need to do that as a town. So we don't have to have these battles anymore. Limit the special exceptions. That's, that's the goal here. So with that, that's really, I mean, if you, you guys have any other questions or comments or anything else you want to bring up? Okay. Otherwise, I will happily entertain a motion to adjourn. So moved. So move times two, anybody? All right, so we are adjourned.